Started with our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God. In this law, there is no justice for all.
Recording in process.
Recording in progress.
Well, good evening and welcome to the city council meeting, July first, two thousand twenty-four. With that, if could have roll call, please.
Luther.
Yeah.
Crowe.
Here.
Sutherland. Yanko.
Here.
McCullough.
Here.
Schwabs.
Here.
Gens.
Here.
Solberg.
Here.
Schlue.
Here.
Erdman.
Here.
Summerfeld.
Here.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any special recognitions this evening. Um, with that, we can go on to approval of minutes. If anybody would like to prove the last meeting's minutes, now is the opportunity to do so. Jeff Luther?
I make a motion to approve the minutes in the last meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion, Ben? Or Matt?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, um, motion made by Jeff Luther, seconded by Matt Crowe. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Okay, um, tonight, um, we've got one change in the agenda. Um, on four B, the proposed election of engineering firm for well nine is under a continued review. So we will, uh, take that off the agenda for the evening. Uh, under public comment, we'll remove that from public comment unless you're here and would like to speak on it. Uh, otherwise, we will bring that up for public comment in the July second meeting in July. Under that, uh, public comment is next. If anybody would like to speak under public comments, um, you're able to do so by coming up to the podium. Please give us your name and your address and do sign in. Um, and please speak for three minutes or less on agenda items for the evening. So with that, we'll open up public comments. You push your button down to. There you go, and your name and address.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Eric Schultz. I was here before. I'm the president of the ATV Association in Dunn County. I'm still in support of Menominee opening up some more routes. And with that, uh, we've had discussion of signage, of doing it, the cost of that. If the city is willing to work with us just a little bit, we've got most of the funding upfront now. Um, we will be able to take and pay for the signage, which would take some of the burn off of all of it. So it's not an expense to the city to do it.
Good.
With that, that's all I really got.
Good.
Questions, feel free to ask them when you need them.
Okay, thank you for being here this evening. All right, moving on now. If anybody else would like to speak in public comments, now is your opportunity to do so.
Hi, everyone. Becca Schoenborn, um, twenty-seven, twenty-one Nelson Drive. Um, I'm here as the executive director of downtown Menominee. I have a special event packet on the agenda tonight. Um, we have, this will be our second and third running of this new music on main series that we're starting downtown this summer. Um, and as we go, we're kind of hoping to grow the event and add to it as we go through the summer. So with this, uh, first one, we didn't ask to have any streets closed, just to kind of get a feel for the attendance, and we're asking to close second street between Mabel Tainter and Coppelstone for the July and August dates to have some outdoor activities and potentially outdoor music in that space for the August event. Thank you.
Thank you, Becca. Again, public comment is open. Last call for public comments. Okay, we'll close public comments, move on with the rest of our meeting. Um, under new business, a four A proposed ordinance, twenty twenty-four dash eleven on ordinance repealing and re creating title six, chapter one, section twelve, all terrain and utility terrain vehicle usage. Um, we've talked about this in the past. Uh, there's some information, uh, in your, uh, packet. Um, there, there's some rules, regulations. Uh, the city Menominee is taking a pretty firm look at this. Um, we also sent in a, uh, to the DOT, we sent in, uh, ordinance, twenty twenty-four dash eleven for review and comment, and the, uh, Wisconsin DOT got back to us. At this point, I'll turn it over to, um, David, uh, our public works director. David, can you bring us up to speed, please?
Yeah, so we submit this to the DOT, both to the, um, Hallie Cusman, who does the review of the ordinances, as well as Matt Ready, who does the review of, uh, signage plans. Uh, you can see in your packet, there's a, uh, email from Hallie Cusman saying she doesn't have any concerns with the ordinances presented. Uh, we are still working through the signage plan, um, with, uh, Matt Reedy, but I expect that we'll get that, uh, completed relatively quickly. As of right now, the signage plan has a hundred and fifty-seven signs. Uh, we've estimated the cost at approximately sixteen thousand dollars. Um, Eric, um, uh, alluded to the fact that they had, uh, some of that money, but not all of it, and they were willing to fundraise for the rest. Um, but at this point, uh, we believe that sixteen thousand dollars will be covered by the ATV club. The ordinance is, as it was presented in the, in the previous meeting, except for Ben made a couple of changes to the trailers.
Yeah, yep. Uh, we added in the trailer provision, which was brought up, and then, uh, due to Lee's astute reading, we did change the spelling of break in it, so. Um, otherwise, it is, uh, how it was presented before.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, any questions, um, for staff? Uh, Lee?
At the last meeting, I asked if we could get a, uh, from the DNR, the number of registered even vehicles in the city. I was wondering if we obtained that.
I don't think they got back. Did David?
Yeah, I can answer that. So they, they would not release that information without open records request, a fee and four weeks to, uh, put together the data. So we didn't, we do not have that at this point. If it's important to your deliberation on this, we can certainly try to get it for the next or the final meeting.
Okay, um, Rick might have that information. If we wanted to waive the rules, we could ask him to come forward if you would like, Lee, we could do that.
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion been made to waive the rules. There's a second to that motion. Jeff Luther?
I'll second Lee's motion.
Motion made and seconded to waive the rules. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Come on up to the podium, back up, and, and, uh, if you know the answer to that question, maybe you can answer that question. Put your mic down. There you go.
I can get you pretty close. Roughly eight thousand in Dunn County. Uh, with Menominee being one of the largest cities in Dunn County, I would have to venture that there's a large majority of that eight thousand located awful closer within the city of Menominee.
Okay.
I mean, there's gonna be a few, well, residential, but there's gotta be at least half of that in this area. Yeah.
Wow, that's a lot. Good, thank you. Okay, well, we don't have an exact number. However, how we're going to treat this tonight, uh, ladies and gentlemen, is if you're in favor of this, we would introduce this as an ordinance, and then we'll do a first reading, and then we'll come back at subsequent meetings for the second reading and then approval. So at this time, if anybody would be in support of this, uh, you could make the motion, or you could introduce the ordinance. Jeff Luther?
I'd like to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven to repeal and recreate title six, chapter one, section twelve, all train and utility terrain vehicle usage.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then if you'd like to waive the first reading, um, you could make that motion, or somebody else can.
I'll make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four eleven to repeal and recreate title six, chapter one, section twelve, all train and utility terrain vehicle usage.
Sounds like we've got to waive the first reading. Mary?
I will make motion to waive the first reading.
Second? You, you're gonna make a, you're a second?
Yeah, I'm the second.
Okay, so you're, Jeff Luther introduced the ordinance, Jeff Luther made the, uh, motion to waive the first reading, Mary Solberg is seconding the motion to waive the first reading. Uh, with that, uh, in mind, uh, all in favor, oh, go ahead, Laura. Do something.
Um, has this been put on any social media for the city? I didn't see it yet, um, on social media.
Uh, I'm not sure. Um,
Okay.
Probably it's going to be now.
Yeah.
Since it's been introduced and, and then we'll have feedback, and then that's kind of why, um, two, uh, people will be able to come in and speak, uh, at the next meeting.
Okay.
So, um, that's kind of the lay of the land here on this one.
Okay.
So motions on the floor to waive the first reading and a seconded. So all in, is there more discussion? More discussion? Gretchen?
So some clarification on the, on the signage, would we need all the signs in place at once, the full sixteen thousand up front, or how, how will we work with not having all the funding for the signage?
I think I can answer that one. I don't think we would open it up unless we have all the funding. David?
So as the ordinance is currently written, it would go into effect on September first. We would install all the signs, and then we would request reimbursement from Dunn County ATV.
Thank you. But I, but answering your question, we're not gonna do this unless the signage is up. I mean, we, it's, it has to be, the signage has to be up before this is official, basically. Um, that's my take on it. Chad?
My opinion would be that we don't put this out on social media, except for like in the meeting minutes and stuff like that, because otherwise people will think that, hey, okay, it's okay to go yet, but it's not.
Well, we'll definitely, it will have to be explained, Ben.
What I mean?
Yeah, I, um, we'll work with staff on that, just to make it explicit that it's coming before council for discussion purposes and um, that we're looking at opening up the vast majority of the city on it. So it won't be, it won't be drafted in a way that tells people they can do it right now, but we do want to get it out to the public as much as possible to get feedback. But we understand what you're saying on that.
And I would also hope that the Dunn County ATV Association would make sure that they lean on everybody, because the last thing we want is problems right away. I'm in favor of this. So we don't want any problems. They gotta have the signal lights. It's all gotta be done right, so we don't get in trouble.
I think, I think that you're gonna have a good cooperation from people involved in this. Yeah, me too. I hope so too. I'm strongly, uh, strongly considering that. So, um, we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? Oh, Ryland?
Um, I, just skimming over this, um, I didn't see anything in here about, uh, noise, and I know that's been a concern from the start on this.
Yep, uh, so the ordinance incorporates twenty-three point thirty-three of the Wisconsin statutes that has the noise, um, uh, noise, I think it's ninety-six decibels, if I'm not mistaken on it. So that's a requirement by state statute, and it's incorporated here in the ordinance as well.
Turn your mic off.
Are we allowed to, uh, have a lower noy- noise level? Or is the state have the ultimate say in that?
I believe the state would have ultimate say in it, since it's specifically put into this, um, to the Wisconsin statutes on it.
Okay, because that noise level is higher than what cars and motorcycles are allowed, correct?
I do not know that.
Okay.
I don't know. I know Jeff Luther was making the remark the other day about, uh, loud trucks coming by his place, and then I came by with my Harley and parked in his yard, so. Uh, I'm thinking that maybe, yeah.
Because people do it, doesn't mean they're okay with it.
Thank you, Ryland. That being said, we have a motion to second on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor of waiving the first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, we're moving on. Uh, we are moving on to four C, request from the water utility to sell or dispose of miscellaneous surplus items. Uh, Jeremy is here this evening if we need to have him speak. Otherwise, David? Schofield?
We'll let Jeremy speak about this.
I figured you would. Jeremy, do you want to come up to the podium? Push the microphone on, please.
So we have those miscellaneous items sitting in our shop, and we'd like to, uh, scrap them or take them to the metal dumpster. Their meter, old water meters, uh, small pipe and fittings from different things that are rusted out or have holes or leak.
Huh.
We'd like to dispose them, create some room in our shop area.
All right. Well, there you go. All right, if anybody would like to make a motion to support, uh, disposing of the surplus items, and you can do so, Ryland?
Um, quick question before I make, uh, I assume that this stuff is coming before us because it has some dollar value that or potential doll- dollar value that you don't want it just disappearing?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, correct. You could get the scrap price for it. So, uh, we usually have uh, scrap dealers that stop around every once in a while, and they'll just load it up. They'll pay us either per meter I just bring the check up to, uh, the treasurer's office.
Okay, thanks. Um, yeah, I would make a motion to approve the sale of surplus, uh, water department.
Okay.
And Ryland, can you include dispose, either sale or disposal of?
Yes, sale of disposal of surplus water department, uh, miscellaneous.
Thank you, Randy.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to sell or dispose of the water department properties. Uh, any discussion? Uh, do we need, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, request from, going on to four D, proposed project hope phase three grant application. This is pretty exciting stuff. And so with that, uh, we'd like to call the chief up here. Um, please, chief, if you'd come on up and describe what's going on, and we'll take it from there.
Hello. Just wanted to give you an overview on the Project Hope grant that we had. It was a three-year grant. It's coming to a close. And as it comes to a close, we're writing another co-op grant. This grant is for just under a million dollars, and it's a no-match grant, but it doesn't affect us. So it's, it's a pretty neat grant. It's, it's, uh, something we're excited about. The last one was just over five hundred thousand, and that was a no-match grant also. By, uh, writing these grants, what we're looking for is we're looking for support, uh, and it's critical that we get support from, uh, the pillars of the community, which would be the city council, the mayor, and that's gonna be one of our asks tonight. And so if we receive this grant moving forward, uh, we'll be able to go into phase three of this grant, and, and that would encompass, uh, uh, broadening our peer support system, uh, bringing in education, uh, for substance abuse disorders, and, uh, also it would encompass the county, not just the city, so it stretches out quite a bit deeper. And also what that would bring in, what we're looking at is bringing in, uh, a social worker to embed in the police department, and that would be part of the police department, uh, for that grant phase, which would be three years. Uh, we'd be looking at bringing in, uh, a robust, uh, management, uh, system for tracking, uh, data and, and where we want to go with this for, uh, accounting purposes and so forth, because there's a lot of numbers to this thing. We would look at, uh, also, uh, bringing a project manager in to help, uh, with, uh, the daily logging and stuff. There's just so much paperwork with this thing that our officers actually bogged down part of the time, probably half of the time, just being inside by keeping up with the stats and data and stuff, so this would be very helpful. So if we got that, that would be great. And so our ask is of the council tonight, but before I give you that ask, I'll tell you where we, where we've been with, with Project Hope. We started out in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. We partnered with the school system, and, uh, we did a, uh, we put together a juvenile review team, and with that team, it consisted of teachers, counselors, uh, Dunn County human service people, uh, law enforcement and so forth. And we identified students that could risk the impact for, uh, substance, uh, disorders or, or were involved in them in, uh, by look at these people, identifying them and bringing them in and, uh, getting them into the counseling services ahead of time. We're able to get them away from the juvenile justice system, and that's what you want, because once you're in that system, you're there forever. Doesn't mean that you're not gonna make it, but it's just, it's harder to get out of the system. So that was a huge success for us. Also, we partnered, uh, by going into schools and, uh, doing some, uh, teaching for the botman training. Actual officers were in the schools, and it's like an eight-week program, uh, in the schools, one day a week, full eight hours a day, and you're connecting and working with students and, and, uh, getting the evidence-based training out to the kids. And in that training, uh, there, there's stuff for you, you're working on, uh, peer, peer support kind of stuff where students, uh, in that adolescent age are often having trouble making decisions. So you, you work on their self-esteem to make them more confident when they're making decisions. That's been a great, great program for us that way. So then, as we moved into phase two, which is in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we started looking at the adult, uh, intervention. And as we looked at the adult stuff, we're looking at adults that were needing, uh, services for, uh, uh, whether it be substance, uh, use disorders, or whether it be, uh, housing problems, or counseling services or so forth. We partnered with a lot of people. And as we looked at that, we had to get out to these, these people in the community, so what we, uh, put together was a quick response team, and that, uh, had to do with, we'd put a police officer, a deputy sheriff, uh, a, a social worker, and a MFD paramedic, and we'd put them in a, in a car. They'd all be in the same car, same group. And they would go out through the community, and they would have people identified that might be in need of services. So what you're getting there is you're not getting the police knocking on your door when they've done something wrong, but we're there ahead of the time. So, and the services were often accepted a lot easier and quicker. And so if I look back at twenty twenty-three, I think we had four hundred attempts or, or try, uh, attempts for contact for these type of services in the field where officers were out doing this. And we, and we end up giving a hundred, uh, uh, referrals for service. So out of that, we got a hundred out of that. And, and, and so it's, it's a neat program. And by bringing this all together, we want to deepen this thing and make it broader. And when we say that, it goes for the whole countywide, because, uh, uh, the county's also been a part of this program. And so tonight, we're asking for, uh, the critical letter and support from the council and the mayor.
Thank you, chief. I know, um, previous chief, Atkinson, um, poured a lot of energy into this, and I know that you picked up that energy. Um, who in the department is kind of, uh, besides yourself, is kind of heading this Project Hope at this moment?
Right now, Commander Hagan is writing the grant for it, and it takes a lot of people. Uh, our behavioral health officer, Officer Aaron Berg, he's also a big component of this. And, and the guy is, uh, a book of knowledge. And so, uh, with, with this grant, if we're successful in receiving it, uh, he's gonna be able to be out there a lot more in the community doing things. So, uh, there's a lot of hours being put into it, and like I said, Brian Hagan would be, for your answer, be the one that's gonna do the management of the program, the, the stat sheets in, in the, the monthly, the quarterlies and so forth. So it's, it's time consumption, uh, a lot of it, so.
Good. Now, I know that the city Menominee is, is, uh, with the, with the council's assistance, implemented this program. Um, and I know Dunn County Human Services too has been a big, uh, advocate too of the program because of the, of its success story. Uh, and I know Dunn County is, is working to be more involved. I know we've reached out to other counties as well. Um, is, when Eric and I would go and, and talk to other counties, um, you know, and reach out to other counties, I'd like to see that continue. Um, and, and I know Eric would be all about it, and of course I would too. Um, but if you have the ability or have people on staff that would be able to do outreach to other counties, um, to promote Project Hope and get them their involvement, uh, it can only help us. Uh, so I, I just really appreciate, uh, the efforts and, and, and can, and commend, uh, your officers for doing what they do and on an everyday basis, but also taking a program like Project Hope and, and making it work, because without the efforts of, of, of you and your staff, uh, this Project Hope would be gone, and it would be in non-existence. So I, I want to thank you, and I, I think the city council too appreciates your efforts, and I think that it won't be a problem tonight to support this. So, uh, anything else that you'd like to say?
Just that, that the program is, is huge. It, it takes a lot of people, a lot of resources, and, and it, five or six people can't run this program alone. It takes, it takes the city, it takes the county. Uh, actually, for when I speak of letters of support, uh, we're looking at, uh, Senator Jesse James, we're looking at Tammy Baldwin. So we're, we're reaching out. The, the school system's also gonna be asked for a letter of support. And, uh, as far as for, uh, promoting the, the program, always with that comes training and training, 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 and that, that is where the networking comes in for talking to your other municipalities and so forth, whether it be out in Washington, or might, whether it's down in, uh, Madison, wherever it may be. So networking is always a huge component of this, because what's working for them might not be working for us, or we don't want to stub our toe, or that will work for us. But some areas, like Superior's got a great program, Madison, us, and I don't know a whole lot more that are, are into the model programs like us, but but our name is out there, and they, they know what we're talking about. And so I, I'm very, very happy and proud of that.
Good. Thank you, chief. Uh, any questions for the chief while we have him up there? Uh, Chad?
Um, in my little call this afternoon, I don't see a lot of these problems, so I'm just kind of curious if you could elaborate. Is it, is the opioid thing getting worse? Is it getting better? Are we making any headway? We're going in the right direction?
Meth is, meth is our problem. It's still there, and, and other things will cycle in, cycle out. And, uh, right now, uh, meth is, is the big problem, and that's, that's huge for, uh, a, a lot of the crimes that are, that are being committed. So, uh, if you want the next council meeting, I can pull the numbers for where we're at with, for meth problems, but it, the problem is, it's so easy to get the drug across the border. Some people are making one trip a day, two trips a day over to Twin Cities and bringing back large quantities back here, and then it gets used up, and then that habit continue. If they're not selling, they're either stealing stuff or committing, committing other crimes and so forth. That's like you've seen the, the catalytic converters being stolen all the time, because it was a quick way to make some money. So yeah, it's, it's there, and, and, and you'll see the other drug stuff too, and we, we're seeing, uh, mushrooms, and we're still seeing the marijuana, and we're seeing, uh, the opioids and stuff like that. So it, it's just a little bit of everything, but the big thing is meth right now. If we can get that hammered down, I think that's gonna be, uh, I guess, uh, a big help for us in one way, one of the spokes in the wheels.
If you were to put a number on how much crime in Menominee is related to methamphetamine, what percentage would that be?
I don't know, but I, I'd, I'd probably say I'd, I'd be shooting from the hip, and I, and I could get that free, but I'd say around fifty percent. That's a lot.
At least half the crimes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was thinking is even higher than that, because, uh, seems like every time I hear about somebody having a catalytic converter stolen, or robbery, or break-in, or a domestic abuse, or something, meth is.
That's a lot. That's a lot. Those, those are big, big numbers. If, if you use that fifty to seventy-five percent, that's, those are big numbers.
Cool. Any other questions for chief? Oh, Matt?
Is most of the meth usage, is that from, uh, demographics with poverty or middle class, or people from money or everywhere?
Good, good question. It's, it's your young people. It's your, your people that are seniors. Uh, it's people that have had good jobs that, that fall off the wagon, and so it, it affects everybody. So that's, that's the big thing about it, is to get the information out there. And, and we've learned, and, and that's why this Project Hope is so important, that you can put people in jail, and then they're back out repeating, and then you put them in jail, and they're back out repeating. It just goes back and forth, back and forth. So when, when do we try to do something different? And that's what we're doing now by offering services for, whether it be through our place, or the stepping stones for housing, whatever it is, there's just so many different components to it. But it's, it's, it's a big program, and it takes a lot of money and, and support, so.
Great. Anything else for the chief? Thank you, chief, for being here and speaking on Project Hope this evening. Okay, it brings us back to council. Council, if you'd like to, uh, support Project, uh, Hope Phase Three Grant Application, somebody would like to make a motion to do so, you could do, go ahead, Gretchen?
I will make a motion to endorse the, uh, letter of support for the cost of twenty twenty-four grant application as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Go ahead, Cody.
I'll second Gretchen's motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Okay, moving on to, um, four E, proposed lease agreement with CW Solutions LLC. Mr. Schofield?
Yes, so, uh, CW Solutions LLC, uh, reached out to us. They're looking to, uh, rent out the, would be the Northwest Wing, uh, first floor. This was actually basement level. Uh, this was a space that Cedar Corporation had, um, been in, I think from May until, uh, July of last year. Um, the next-door neighbor, this is actually one, um, piece that we've just, brought, blocked off with a piece of plywood right now, so we're gonna be having to do a little bit of improvements to put an actual wall in, uh, to separate that, that leased space. Uh, there's a gentleman from, uh, CW Solutions here, um, that is, uh, here to speak if you folks wanted to waive the rules.
Okay, Ryland?
Yeah, I would make a motion to waive the rules, so that, uh, the representative from CW Solutions may speak.
Okay, good. Is there a second to that? Go ahead.
I'll.
Go ahead, Laura. Okay.
Ryland's motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to waive the rules. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hi, good evening. Give us your name and tell us a little bit about CW Solutions.
Absolutely. My name is Thomas Sar, and I am the regional manager for, uh, the eighth, uh, district for the FSET program. CW Solutions is about twenty years old and has been operating, uh, social service programs, uh, around the state of Wisconsin, uh, running fifteen programs right now in the central region, uh, section six. Uh, here in this region, uh, we'll be running just the FSET program, this food share employment training. So any, uh, individual sixteen years or older that qualify for food share, uh, we can work with them if they are, uh, employment goal-oriented, to help them meet those goals, uh, whatever it might be, and wherever they are at. That's actually a great follow-up to, uh, your Project Hope presentation, because I could see them running very well side by side.
Oh, okay, interesting. So some of the services that you provide, could you maybe just give us a, a short overview of those?
I will do my best. I'll also be very honest. I've been working for the company since eight o'clock this morning. So I am also very new to it as well. Uh,
Well, you're a great, you're speaking on it terrifically, so I would let that part out, if you could have fooled all of us.
So, so I am, I am doing my training, uh, on this as, uh, right now as well. Um, our goal is to have everything in place, uh, by the middle of August, definitely by September first. Uh, the contract for sure takes place on October first. Uh, so if people are looking for assistance from us, they may come to the office. It might be helping to write a resume, interview skills. It might, uh, be working on finding transportation for them. How do they get to and from work? It could be a gas card. It could be, uh, a cab voucher. Uh, it could be helping them source clothes that they need, or uniforms, work shoes, uh, things like that, that will help them be successful on the job.
Wow, that's really interesting. Caitlin, I want you to make a note too of some of the services, because I would like to see, um, we do a, a, a building here of some of the different services that are offered here at, at City Hall. Uh, so you might just, uh, maybe you guys could connect and so forth. But that's a really interesting. Any questions, um, for Thomas while we have him up here? Gretchen?
I was just curious of the, the funding model for this. So do you, do you bill the food chair?
This is, this is, is, uh, free to the client, so there's no expense to that. This is, this is free to the client. So there's no expense to them. It's funded through the state. It's actually been around since the mid 90s. And we are taking over for another contractor that was in this region, workforce resources.
Oh, very good, very good. You know, to touch base with the stepping stones and community foundation and Arbor Place and those, you know, go introduce yourself, get some business cards. And I think that's a wonderful addition to our community. So thank you for bringing it. Thank you for being here tonight and thank you for having a job. I mean, and joining CW.
Yeah, I'm unfamiliar with the area. I'm actually a stout graduate and I live in Eau Claire. So this is, this is like coming home to me. So I'm actually excited to come into this region in this type of role. And I think we will see some really great things happen.
Well, I think we'll be excited to have you. So any other questions? Okay, thank you for being here. If anybody would like to support this with a motion, you can do so at this time. Matt?
I make a motion to approve the letter of intent to lease as presented and direct the city attorney to draft the formal lease agreement with CW Solutions LLC.
That's a good motion. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion Laura?
I'll second Eric's motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional, any additional discussion? Okay, with that in mind, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post. Okay, thank you. All right, proposed down to 4F, proposed appointment of Jay Collins to the Menominee Public Library Board. Ryland?
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Jay Collins to the library board.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion Gretchen?
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Post. Thank you. And then moving on down to 4G, proposed Wilson Park sidewalk improvement project. So Wilson Park, just in summary, I know that there's some stepping stones through Wilson Park and they're almost a trip hazard. I know they were put in there for elegance and for, you know, for a practical purpose, but it doesn't seem to be working out so good. So David's been working with, well, himself, he's an engineer, but also city staff to be able to do this work ourselves. So with that, Mr. Schofield?
Yeah, so in your packet and then on the screen here, I included a site plan that was prepared by Cedar Corporation. So you can see that the paver blocks kind of bisect the park southwest to northeast and then center to northwest. They are very uneven. I think the original intent was that we would get some infiltration through the gaps between the blocks. Truth be told, it's in a giant grassy area. So whether the water runs off between the blocks or three inches to the right of the sidewalk, it, in the end, is not going to leave the site. And so we've gotten some complaints over the years about folks that are in a wheelchair or somehow want to see the the Linkin Gar Band better during their concerts. And right now they essentially have to sit under the Farmers Market Pavilion, which is off to the side. And so this would allow, if I can go down to the next page here, this would allow a much nicer spot for them to sit in the middle of the park. We have kind of a 25 by 25 foot area in the center there, kind of a plaza. And then sidewalks in all directions. We did include in addition to the southeast, my parents would love to see that as kids walk up and do the march across the stage, they'll have a way to get up there without walking across the grass. The other thing that we did add too is right now to the women's bathroom, you have to walk across grass or dirt is a better way to say it. And so this also added a concrete path over to the women's bathroom and out around the flagpole. So these are, these are important improvements to the park. We did allocate 50,000 in the ARPA funding. And we estimate this will cost less than 50,000. What I'm asking for tonight is authorization for the city to construct these improvements ourselves. Obviously, we have to purchase the concrete, we have to purchase grass seed, we have to expend labor and machine hours and that sort of a thing. So that's what we're asking for tonight.
What we're looking to do too is do this in-house, meaning city crews.
Yes.
We'll be able to do this project, which is, I think, huge. The other thing that I wanted to mention also with this project is the handicap people that come from, you know, different places in their wheelchairs and such, really have a hard time negotiating those rocks and such and the tall grass. So I think it's an improvement, a needed improvement. I think it's going to be well-served. So with that, if anybody, Matt?
Is this coming out of the Parks and Rec budget?
This is coming out of the ARPA allocation. But this is not included in their regular budgets out of our $1.6 million ARPA.
Gretchen?
I'm curious about the positioning of the, because maximizing the amount of wheelchairs that can sit there without the, having the pathway still clear all the way through. Was there, is there a reason that it's this way? Because the stage is on the corner, yeah?
Stages to the southeast.
So if it was where 45, yeah.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Like how many wheelchairs while still leaving the walkways open?
My intention there was to not have a bunch of concrete points sticking out in northeast, south.
That's what's my question. Okay.
And we may find, it'll be interesting to see how many people use it. Right now, we're showing that the Eagle statue would be just relocated to the side. That might be, if it's not terribly well-used by wheelchairs, that might be a good spot to actually move that statue or a future statue and really have a kind of a center point of the park. But I think we're going to let that sit for now and just see how many people we do get to use that space.
Any other questions Ryland?
I guess I have two questions. I know that when we first built the Farmers Market Pavilion, there was discussion of doing a water permeable concrete there that, that idea got scrapped, but I'm wondering if that's still a feasible idea. And my second question is, when everything's dug up, does it make sense to like to that center point in the park to run utilities there for, you know, electrical and possible sound? Because that seems like an ideal spot if you're having other, you know, amplified music there to have a soundboard.
Yes. So that's, that's what this area, it's probably hard to see, but there's a 10 by 10 concrete pad off to the side of the, of the front walk. And we're going to be extending conduit and a pull box to that location. We coordinated that with Chris Olson. My opinion is there's no reason to spend probably double the expense to put permeable concrete here when the water hits the sidewalk, runs two and a half feet and falls into the earth right next to it. So there's, there's just no reason to spend that extra money here.
Okay, interesting. Hey, the only one thing I'd add, David, timeframe, are we going to be able to do this after the Luddington Garden season?
The intention is to start after the Linkin Gar Band season is done. We will absolutely be disrupting the farmers market for a period there. There's really no time of the year that we can do this without some disruption of the farmers market.
And the only other thing that I would add is I know that there's a big event scheduled there on for, I don't, September, can't remember, Homecoming Day? And we might want to work around that as well. So, but I think it's a great idea. And if anybody'd like to support this from the city council, you could do so with a motion. Council, Jeff?
I make a motion to authorize construction of the Wilson Park sidewalk improvement project at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Okay, good motion Ben. Thank you. Cody?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Oh, roll call, roll call vote.
Schweps?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Silberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Sommerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Crow?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Thank you. Brings us down to 4H, proposed lake bank trail and dock project. We've been talking about this for quite a long time. We've got some guesstimates on what it's going to cost for a dock and not just a dock, but a what do they call it when you put more than one boats? What do they call it when you put more than one boat up?
Well, we have it right now for an eight boat.
Eight boat. It's more than just a dock. It's a slip, a slip dock able to contain eight boats. This is a preliminary concept of what a trail and or boardwalk or whatever could be. We did a feasibility study on this. Cedar did one up and got some pricing back. Where I'd really like to take this is not only put it on the fall comprehensive plan, but I would also like to make sure that next spring, we could at least get going on the slip dock. And if not, perhaps a trail, a dirt trail with some wood chips or whatever, to find out the usage and so forth and so on. But have the monies in play so that if we decide to pull the trigger on this, we could then go to the next level. So what I'm asking tonight is to bring this forward and take it to the next step and then we'll include it in our budget process for this fall. It was a lot of money, I thought, to do the whole thing in full scope. And with that, I would ask that we take a piece of it and move it forward chunk at a time. And the chunks at a time that I'd like to move forward would be first, the slip dock, the dirt trail that would be maybe covered with mulch or wood chips or something like that. And then move it forward at a future point. Mr. Schofield?
Yeah, so Cedar Corporation did the feasibility studies the mayor mentioned. We had talked at a previous meeting about this. They estimated this at 1.1 to 1.3 million dollars. The dock is an additional 80,000 approximately. We've got two kind of informal quotes for two docks that are very similar. We did, Lee had asked us to look at the alternative for a commercial tram. The cost of that would be seemingly less, somewhere in the neighborhood of $400,000. Quite frankly, I don't relish the idea of trying to maintain commercial tram in this vicinity and keep it safe. And I'm concerned about that. So just for, for all intents and purposes, I would suggest that we eliminate that as an option. So what we have before you tonight is to include this in the capital improvement plan. As we start looking at that capital improvement plan, the first year, which would be 2025, the mayor would like us to include the dock. And I'm curious to see if the council would concur. And then probably at a future year, look at the, at the ramp portion of it. So the dock would be available. The dock would not be handicap accessible until the ramp is constructed. But it would be available for folks that wanted to come, park their boat there, walk up, use our downtown for dinner or ice cream cone or something and then leave.
And in addition to that, slip dock would be, I think, a trail system to get there. Whether that's some small amount of maintenance, you know, to just dig into the hillside, do some leveling, do some wood chips or along those lines. But that much money, to me, we have to have a pretty high usage before we spend that much money. And I think the devil's in the details of, if the slip dock is being used and there's a lot, there's a constant trail, Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights going up there, then maybe we take a look at the next level. So that's kind of where I'm at with this. Gretchen?
Well, I'm curious how a trail would have to have so much bank erosion control that I feel like that wouldn't be very cost-effective either. Like a trail would cost money as well because it would be along the same path, correct?
Well, it would, but there has been trails down there before and with the roots and the nature of that, the trail system, it could be easily maintained, I think, with, with wood chips and so forth. It's not a straight, we're not going straight shot down. I don't know what the angle is.
Yeah, I get it. But even when you cut into, you have to cut into the bank a little bit because the steepness of that slope, so.
Well, I.
Not sure if.
The mayor's intent, and I, I think we can do it, is like talking a cattle path, like
Oh.
like 18 inches wide kind of a thing, not.
Not 10 feet wide or anything like that.
Okay.
Okay, good, good question. Thank you for clarification. Any other discussion otherwise? Mary?
I know that you said the tram could be too expensive. I just feel that it's, it's rather important that if we're going to have an asset like this trail going down to boat slips, that we need to offer a way for people that say are in a wheelchair or can't make the walk like this. We need to think really long and hard on not doing, that we need to do it versus not doing it. I think it would be kind of a, I think we would miss it if it wasn't fully accessed to the public.
I'll just answer that real quick. What we did look at too was a long, a long straight shot that was side on the hill, all the way up, that you could possibly use a wheelchair or something along those lines. So there's some, there's some logistics and things to work out yet. But initially, the kickback trail was designed so that if we did do a boardwalk or otherwise, there'd be a stops point. And then, you know, a stop point and a stop point. But if it had to be, you know, there could be another walking trail thing that's on the side hill all the way up as a straight shot. Thing is, you know, if you're going on a wheelchair and you get you could be down pretty fast, coming back might be a challenge. But I think there's a lot of discussion, a lot of pieces still to work on this. I would just like to make sure it keeps moving and that we don't lose sight of this project.
Mayor?
Yes.
So the ramp that has been laid out here is handing up accessible. It's all under like 7.1%. There's rest areas every two and a half feet of vertical drop. It would be, it'd be a workout. There's no doubt about that. There'd be a workout for me on my feet, but it, it is handicap accessible.
Not much of a workout going downhill, but coming back up, Lee?
Right now, when I use the patio at the waterfront, there's a dock there. And maybe you see one boat in, maybe once in a while, two boats in. I wonder where in the heck these eight boats are going to come from.
There, we'll save that discussion for you and I, but I know that the the waterfront has closed the ramp off at the top of the hill, the access point to it. Plus the stairs need some fixing and there's some other conversation that we could have on that particular thing. So I think with the people that I've been talking to around the lake, they don't want necessarily to go to the waterfront, but they'd like to come downtown. And so I think it opens up a brand new or opens up a door for additional boats. Randy?
What is the elevation from the top down to the water?
Let me look here.
Because I can't read those things.
So at Main Street, it's 876 feet above sea level. And at the lake, it's 814. So check, check my math, but I'm thinking it's around 60 feet of drop.
Okay, because at Peninsula State Park, they've built a wheelchair ramp all the way up to the top of the tower. It's like a quarter mile long and it's 10 feet wide. And when they brought a bus there, everybody had a wheelchair. And it was really accessible and it was kind of neat to see people using that. And I know that's, that's higher than 60 feet, that tower. That's huge. But, and I don't know where the money came from to build it. But I don't think, you know, that should be a deterrent either of, God, it's going to cost a lot of money.
Randy, where did you say this was?
Peninsula State Park, Orindor County.
Minnesota State Park. Can we look that up?
Peninsula State Park.
Oh, yeah. Peninsula State Park. Okay. Thank you. Good information. We'll take that down. Okay, well, we'll have to do a follow-up on that one. So remind us. So Chad?
How, is it, is it even a possibility to get to the boat, to the boat slips or there, to the park?
I can answer that. No, there's three property owners in between. At least one of those is probably not going to give us access.
Don Stout would be interested. Mr. Youth Pedal said that Stout would be interested. So I don't know what Mr. Trimble thinks. But I mean, we would need, we would need this ramp. Because we could wheelchair all the way.
Yeah, well, I mean, at that point, they could just get off at that, at the boat ramp. And just ride up from there.
Make the lake trail all the way around to the, what is that park?
No. We're talking about the end of First Avenue, just below Wilson Place. I don't recall the name of the park.
Below the Wilson Place.
Oh, the boat landing by the dam.
Yeah.
That's what we call it.
Simple, stupid. You know what I mean? It just seems so
Well, we used to have a a trail all the way from the river stand. You used to have some steps. Then it'd go on dirt and then it would go all the way down on the bottom of the lake and then all the way around. And it would go behind the old fire station, which was there way back when. And then around and then, of course, I don't know, we used to use it when we were kids. Probably shouldn't have, but we did. We used to actually park our boat down there and walk up to the river stand or we'd park our boat down there and come up to the old, oh my gosh, was Burger King there at that time? I think so. But yeah, we used to use that lake bank and that trail when I was a teenager. You know, ten years ago, so.
It just seems like we're not utilizing our beautiful lake that we have.
Yeah, well, then that's part of this is more lake utilization and more downtown access. And we've got, not only do we have ARPA funds, but we also have pit funds that we can use for this. So that's kind of what we're looking at. So it wouldn't really necessarily, it's a good allocation of those types of funding is what I'm saying. Mary, did you have something else to add?
I'm just nodding affirmative.
Okay, well, your microphone doesn't pick up nods. So it just Okay, Matt?
Do we have any preliminary data on how much usage this would need to get a decent return on investment or am I getting ahead of myself?
Well, I think, I think from the people I've talked to, they've been requesting this for about seven, eight years, ten years probably. And I know that there's four or five of them that would use it constantly. There's also three or four that live on the lake that would also use it. So I think that's why we went with the eight slip dock versus not that much less money to go with a regular dock. So we kind of got biggest bang for the buck, you might say, in this. So Gretchen?
I think having lived here a long time and remembering going down there a lot, I think this is a build it, they will come scenario, especially with people just remembering what it was like. It adds, in my opinion, when I see this, it adds parkland to our city. That is an unused portion of our city right now. It's hard to access the lake unless you have a boat or and want to hang out by the boat ramps or, you know, it is a way for people that don't have boats also to access. And especially since would be the closest access from my house kind of. I consider it like additional park for the city. And frankly, if I was, I'd walk downtown a lot more along that sidewalk if I could just like scoot down to the lake and enjoy it. So and I know that's the case for, you know, ten people that I know personally to. And revitalizing that part for the city, I think, would add a lot.
Well, I think that's what you just said, revitalizing that portion for the city is a strong runner for the city of Menominee. So I support this from some people talking to me and from my past. So with that being said, if anybody'd like to make a motion to move this forward, we could do that at this time. Jeff Luther? You got your hand up? Oh.
They did. I'll make a motion to direct the staff to include the lake bank, trail and dock project for consideration in the draft twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-nine capital improvement plan.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
I'll second Jeff's motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, thank you. And moving on to for I special event, music on main. Becca was here. She talked about it a little bit. If we have any questions, we can certainly call her up, but I think it's a it's a good move in supporting downtown Menominee on an event. And if you would also like to make this happen, a motion would be go ahead, Gretchen?
Ask a quick question. There's access when we have those second street events. Does the hotel have good access or have they said anything?
They've had good access in the past. They've not said anything. Mr. Schofield?
We provide access off of six, lot six. There's a small area where you can kind of scoot through there.
That's right. Okay. All right. I just want to make sure that we weren't burning any bridges.
That seems to be the easiest road to close and the most functional for events. And so with that being said, if anybody'd like to make a motion to support this, you can do so at this time. Matt?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event permit for music on main on July twelfth and August ninth, twenty twenty-four as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Matt, can you please include the
Contingent upon receiving certificates of insurance.
Okay, thank you. Mary?
I will second Matt's motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, we do not have any budget transfers this evening. Under mayor's report, I just want to remind everybody that there is fireworks Saturday night in Menominee. On the Fourth of July, there is no official celebration in Menominee. It's hard to get volunteers and such. But other than that, I don't have a extended mayor's report. Mr. Schofield?
I just have a couple of short things. First of all, kayak rentals. We've, as of about a week ago, we've rented eighty-seven times. So where people are using the lake, I have noticed, I don't know whether there are rentals, but there is a group that sits and listens to music over the Menomen out on the water. So I think that we're doing some good things there. And then as of about a week and a half ago, because I failed to ask for an update, we had around seventy-five hundred visitors at the water park this, so far this summer, including one day that that we had to turn some people away because we got the capacity. So it's being used. We've had some weird weather and so there's obviously some days where we don't get a whole lot of use, but on the days that it is nice and hot, people are using it.
David, what is capacity at the water park? Just curious, do you know?
I believe it was eight hundred and forty people, something like that.
Eight hundred and forty-one when I show up.
We won't turn you away, Mary.
I'm coming in.
Hey, I just want I just want to refresh everybody's thought process here too. Those pickleball courts, I'm a goodness. I cannot believe how busy they are. They are being used early in the morning and my wife and I went up there to play pickleball. I played for the very first time the other night and I did amazing. Well, I lost, but she was practicing fifteen minutes before I got there. So but I'm just telling you that pickleball courts in Menominee are, and anything that is outdoor, we need to support outdoor things for our kids, for our families. So if there's outdoor events, kayaking, I've been talking to David about electric bikes and bicycles and rental projects in the city of Menominee in different locations. We're trying to come up with a project for that. I don't, I wanted to get it done for this year. I doubt if we're going to make it, but that's going to be probably in the capital budget for next year. And we want to try to put a electric bicycle package together in and around town. So that being said, I'd like to see some Suri bikes and also some handicap Suri bikes so that two or four people could ride on a bike and you could also put a wheelchair in the back, maybe some electric assist. But there's a lot of obstacles. There's, you know, electric, electricity needed. Although I was talking to an individual who said that they have done, they know somebody that's did battery packs with their solar panels. And they plug their bikes into the battery packs and the batteries have GPS on them. And there's a, but what we run into is when we want a firm to come to Menominee and do this, similar to the kayaks, for electric bikes, they want a four or five year contract with a lot of money involved. So we're trying to subsequent that and make it a little bit more affordable for us. So if anybody's got any ideas on how to make this happen, or if you've been to a city and you see some electric bikes and you think they're cool, you know, do some research on it, come back to David or I, and please bring that information back to the council. I'm going to open it up for a discussion. Nothing? Okay. Okay, round the horn? Anybody? Clara?
I was at the county board chairs forum last week and sitting at lunch with the Pierce County Board Chair. And he explicitly said how excited he was about Project Hope. And he just called it out as saying it was an amazing project and it just, I'm sorry Eric isn't here to hear it, but it was, it was really good to hear that it spreads.
Good. Thank you for that. I know that we are being noticed. I know Eric, you know, the city council here supported Eric's notion of putting Project Hope together. And with the city's support, it has been growing. I know that he's been contacted and talked, we've given speeches in Washington DC. And he's also been contacted from the East Coast and West Coast and all around. So it's nice to hear that somebody local within a few miles is excited about Project Hope as much as we are. So thank you. Gretchen?
I was going to say on, I believe it was Thursday, the twenty-sixth, I attended an award ceremony from Focus on Energy at UW Stout. They just won, they're the only university this year or public education institution, I believe, that won it was called the Energy Efficiency Excellence Award from Focus on Energy for the whole state. So they're one of ten state awardees. And they're also have, you know, comparable plans with us along with, you know, for our carbon efficiency twenty fifty goal for the whole state. And they're bumped it up also with some twenty thirty goals. So I think there's a lot of opportunity there to see how they're also helping the city with its goals on energy efficiency.
Good. Thank you for attending that. I know Lee Schwabs was, you know, with Focus on Energy and Excel Energy and he's a big proponent too of conserving energy and being carbon neutral by twenty fifty is our goal. You might notice too, a giant crane that's on the Wilson Museum lawn. They're going to be working on the bank below the dam. And they're going to shot creed it and so forth and so on. Do you have any technical information on that, Mr. Schofield?
No, they have all the traffic control up. They had the crane was sitting in the parking lot when I came through this morning. But they will be closing the southbound right lane occasionally to do deliveries into that site. So they will be taking down their flagpole so they don't have to work around it all the time.
Okay, but I also understand that when they get the project completed, they're going to put a new display out there for the tainter, is it tainer gate?
Yeah, so they were, the existing tainer gate that was out there was kind of a replica. They actually have a tainer gate that's been sitting in storage from, I can't remember if it was Bloomer or another dam. And so they're going to be putting that one in place and then putting some infographics up to explain how it works.
Cool. I was going to say that's going to be a darn good display.
That project is very timely with the Rapid End Dam failure here last weekend. That is, they had a situation where those, where the tainer gates on that bridge, in that dam got clogged and then the water found a way around the dam. That's exactly what they're trying to avoid with this project.
Good. Thank you for that, Gretchen.
I just wanted to add, I'm not sure if people are aware, they probably are, that the tainer gate is on the Grand Cooley Dam out in Washington. And I learned that when I was crossing the Grand Cooley. Saw the sign and I was like, I was very pumping my head. Everyone in the car was annoyed, but yeah, I think I just always, it tickles me about the tainer gate.
Cool. Very good. Matt? Jeff? Anything? Nothing. Cody?
Yeah, I know that the stout student government has some bike programs and they have their own funding. So there could be a potential for partnership there in the future regarding the bike idea. Just want to put that out there.
Could you, could you get together with David and I sometime and talk to us about it?
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you. Mary?
Nothing other than I've thought about it with pickleball courts, you know, if we're working in the parks coming up, you know, in the next couple, three years, you know, it would be nice to maybe put in a few pickleball courts where we can fit them in just even if they're an odd place, if they're close to residents, you know, how much fun is that?
Well, it is fun. I know when Dave and I, we've got a subsequent plan on paper. The thing about pickleball is when they want to have a tournament, they'd like to have all their courts in one location. Which I understand neighborhoods like to have courts and so forth and so on. I question how much the tennis courts gets used up at Wakanda. And maybe that could be turned into pickleball courts, but we also are looking at a basketball court and some other amenities and where they're going to go and so forth. But we're also looking at expanding our baseball fields besides. So there's a park plan and there's a bunch of things happening in that arena. We just don't have anything finalized, but you'll be getting more information in months or months or so to come. So Chad?
I just wanted to say I went for a bike ride on the Menomen Loop and there was a baseball game going on and I sat and watched the baseball game and people from out of town were complimenting how beautiful the park was and all the baseball diamonds. So it's not going unnoticed.
Good. Thank you for that, Chad. I think our city crews, you know, Dave Frank is here this evening too, and he's been a big participant in making sure that our parks look good. We've got some new personnel in those areas. Parks, not only the parks look good, but you know, we did a baseball diamond upgrade a few years ago. And we spent some money on it and the baseball program has really come back alive, I think, because of it. And the park is looking, indeed is looking very good. Dave, do you have anything to say on that? David Frank? Okay, Ryland?
Yeah, the other day I had a phone call with the project manager for the Habitat for Humanity houses and that are on Brickyard Road. And they said that they're still looking for potential owners for both of those halves of that twin home. They had somebody lined up for one of them and that person or family got cold feet on whether or not they really wanted to own a house and backed out on it. So both of those are, they're looking for families for those and it sounds like they have a sliding scale based on what people's needs are as to what the price is, but yeah, I took a look at the one and they're, you know, it's looks like a nice house with, you know, a city park is a backyard. So it just sounds like they're having trouble getting the word out to the community. So.
Our media person can maybe grab a hold of it. And then also Caitlin. You know, I think we're in since we're in discussion, if you wanted to comment some, something?
I would assume so because they, you know.
Because I have it up on my website, but it says deadline.
Yeah, because I just talked to him last week about it.
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Randy, do you have anything to add? No? All is good. Oh, that's good. Caitlin, are you doing well in your endeavors? We knew you'd say that. Anything to finish up, David? Okay, thank you. We're going to move on with the rest of our meeting. A number of good communications there too, and so appreciate that. Under claims, if we want to pay the claims, there was a claims. What's that? Yeah, there's a revised list in front of you this evening. So if somebody'd like to make a motion to support that, we could do so at this time. Mary?
I'd make a motion to play, pay the bills, the revised list as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Randy?
I'll second Mary's motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Okay, so that brings us down to licenses, the normalist plus renewals. Kate, do you have anything to add to that?
No, all, these are all renewals except for, we have one new, actually two new mobile food truck applications on this list. But yeah, other than that, I just, I reprinted the copy that I handed out earlier because in the original document Speedway, the Speedway locations were listed under the wrong type of license. So I didn't want council to approve the wrong kind of license for Speedway. They are now under the correct license category, which is just for Class A beer and liquor cider only. Not all forms of liquor. So just clarify that.
Thank you for noticing. So if they'd like to support that with a motion, they can do so at this time. Jeff Luther?
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license, the amended liquor license as presented.
And Jeff, can you include in that, that includes the twenty twenty-four license renewals too, please?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four licenses to cover all license presented to us.
That works. Yeah, that's perfect. Anybody like to second that motion? Matt?
I'll second Jeff's motion.
Motion made and seconded to support the licenses. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, thank you. Now we have a conundrum. Oh, sorry. I thought I had it on. Thank you. So we didn't have anybody a couple of weeks ago to make a motion to adjourn. Does anybody want to make that motion tonight to adjourn? Cody?
I'll move to adjourn.
Morning, motion to adjourn. Is there a second to that motion? Matt?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.